For us, Raymond Cock.
Please the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tudy.
How long have I been since anybody called you Raymond?
Long time.
I got hung up between Raymond and Tudy.
All right, the next item on the agenda is approval of regular meeting minutes from March 4th, 2024. Those were sent out last week. I trust that everybody's had a chance to look over them. If there are no concerns or comments about those, I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
I have one item, correction, Mayor, if I could. It mentions that Councilwoman Contras led the council in the Pledge of Allegiance. Maybe we ought to change that to a head crack.
Yeah.
Yeah, please.
I've already called her that once recently, so.
That's all.
I make the motion that we accept. With that, motion by Clayton, do I have a second?
I'll second with the change.
Second, Gina, second with the change, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is approval and ratification of the bills. Again, those were sent out earlier for everyone to look over, so if there are no questions or concerns about those, I'll entertain a motion to approve the bills.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Second. Motion by Terry, second by Clayton, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Visitors, Ruby, Dad?
Little Sha.
Yeah, Scotty. Next item up is second and final reading of ordinance relating to falconry hunting on Nut Park and Old Landfill located on White Street. Do you have that, Erlene?
Yes. Where is the city of Litchfield?
Whereas the city of Litchfield has certain real property open to the public for designated purposes, whereas it is in the best interest of the community, there be uniform restrictions on said properties if it helps to protect the safety and welfare of the community, and now therefore be it ordained by the city of Litchfield, Kentucky as follows. Hunting on any city-owned real property is prohibited with the exception of falconry, which shall be allowed at Nut Park and the area known as the Old Landfill on White Street. Hunting shall be defined as the activity of killing a wild animal for food or sport. Killing wild animals on city-owned property by way of gunshot, archery, gigging, trapping, or falconry are hereby prohibited with the exception stated previously. This ordinance shall not restrict the removal of vermin or pests by city of Litchfield employees or by contracted labor. This ordinance does not prohibit fishing by license holders on city-owned property. A person found to be in violation of this ordinance shall be cited by the code enforcement officer and shall be fined. If a citation for a violation of this chapter is not contested by the person charged with a violation, the maximum penalties below shall apply, however, the code enforcement board may waive any or all of the penalty for an uncontested violation. If it's in its discretion, the board determines that such waiver will promote compliance with this ordinance. The penalties listed below are for each day a violation continues, beginning on the first day after the ending date of the correction period given in the citation. A second offense is an offense that occurs within five years of determination by the code enforcement board of a prior offense. All others are those that occur within five years of the determination by the code enforcement board or two or more prior offenses. And we need to take a vote on this tonight.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the final reading of that ordinance. Motion by Clayton. We have roll call now.
We need a second.
Need a second.
I'll second.
Second by Tudy, Denny?
I'm going to vote no on this, and the reason is it says that the person that's in violation has to be cited by the code enforcement officer. I'm not sure that's a good idea to have Tyler out there. The chances of anybody hunting on the ground is minimal at best, but if they are hunting, they've got a gun, and I'm not sure Tyler would be the right person to go out there and enforce it. So, we've had a family member that got assaulted while somebody was hunting on their property, and it's just a... I'm voting no because of that.
Could we just change that in the... Could you just change that?
Yeah, we could change it to say cited by the Litchfield City Police Department, but enforced through the code enforcement board. That way the citations would flow through the code enforcement board.
Could it just be law enforcement?
Pardon?
Can it just be law enforcement? I mean, I'm assuming Litchfield would be out there, but...
Yeah, typically the county officers wouldn't, so it'd just be city police officers, so, I mean, it's... I would, I would, I would state Litchfield City Police Department.
Is that what you're meaning? What are you meaning?
Me, I just, law enforcement to me is more general, I mean, you have your different branches, and I mean, if something... I don't know what could take place, but I don't think specifically saying Litchfield. I just think law enforcement, whether it be fishing wildlife, whether it be sheriff, whether it be whoever gets out there or needs to be out there, because you don't know what else situation could be going on.
What's your feelings on that, David?
Well, I kind of see her point, especially with fish and wildlife. I don't know, I don't know how it would be with, how the county would feel with enforcing our ordinance.
Right.
Right.
Is the only thing. I mean, fishing wildlife, I don't, I don't know how you really work that. I mean, we, the Litchfield Police Department would definitely take care of it, but I don't know how other agencies might feel about enforcing our ordinance.
I would just put any authorized law enforcement.
But wouldn't, wouldn't we, David, if we were out in the county, had to be out in the county, and they had something like that, wouldn't we enforce their ordinance?
We would, we would, I mean, you know, if it come down to something like that, yeah, we would.
I realize the chances are slim that anybody else would be needed.
So, you would take a city officer and go enforce county ordinance?
I would take, I would just, if we was assisting the county...
Assisting is a whole different day, whole different word.
Assisting, no, we would not go...
Because there's some time...
By yourself, they're not going to go.
Yes.
Some time their officers are doing something else, and we have to respond.
I understand, it's special circumstances, though.
Yeah, absolutely not would we go out and want to complain of just a violation of an ordinance to enforce it in the county.
Right.
Okay, I mean, they're relevant, I mean, I just thought that...
Yeah, I would just suggest any authorized law enforcement agency.
Okay. Do we need to go back and rewrite it then, or do we need to go ahead and with our vote tonight?
No, I would just do it with the vote with inserting those words.
Okay.
I would just insert the words with any authorized law enforcement agency, and then I would just vote on it like that.
So, are we leaving code enforcement in there? I know you said and enforce that.
And I would put, and I would put enforce through the code enforcement board. That way the citation would flow through the code enforcement board.
I think you need to specify Litchfield.
I agree, it's the city of Litchfield, our police department's on 24/7.
Yeah, I'm like David, wildlife's going to struggle coming in here to enforce one of our ordinances that's not a law.
Okay, so general consensus. Wes, it looked like you got questions.
I think part of the issue is part of...
But Landfill is Millwood.
Is outside of city limits.
It's not going to be a city, the city's not going to respond to if there's somebody hunting on that property.
True.
I understand.
Since we do own property that's out in the county with a general emphasis on any law enforcement, it would cover that. If you specify Litchfield, that's, you know, would they be, have to be the ones go to Millwood or...
Yes.
Well, but is this, this ordinance, this ordinance...
Yeah, that's what I think.
Yeah, we own it.
I was going to say, this ordinance, for the most part, is dealing with Nut Park and White Street property, so.
I mean, even if on the Millwood property, I would foresee that it would be our city officers that would go to it and respond to it. But we can state any law enforcement agency, and that would cover county or city.
David, do y'all still have a gun range out there?
We do, that's where it's at, it's actually at the land field.
All right, guys, how, what direction do we want to go with this? Do we want to push?
Denny, does that satisfy you, or you just know anyway?
No, no, that was the issue, I just didn't want Tyler enforcing.
No, I understand that, but if we change the verbiage on it, I mean...
As long as Tyler doesn't have to go out there and enforce it, as long as we've got law enforcement to enforce it. If that changed, I'm, I'm a yea.
So, we want to go ahead and vote, let Erlene change that, that verbiage and get done, okay?
Okay.
So, we'll start over, Denny?
With that change, I vote yea.
Gina?
Yea.
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 All right. Thank you, guys. Okay, second and final reading of an amendment to an ordinance providing for an assistant police chief. Erlene?
Whereas the city of Litchfield currently has an ordinance which mandates the position of assistant police chief within the Litchfield Police Department, and whereas based on the needs of the department, the decision of whether to have a police chief shall be vested with the police chief of the department. Now therefore be it ordained by the city of Litchfield, Kentucky, then ordinance minute number 10, page number 125-A, passed on the 15th day of September, 1975, is hereby amended as follow. With deleted portions being indicated by a line drawn through them and encompassed by brackets and closing them with added portions being underlined, there having, here therefore be established a police department for the city of Litchfield. Said department shall consist of a chief of police and such other members of the department as may be provided by the chief of police.
On that second, whereas, this is whereas based on the needs of the department, the decision of whether to have, it should say an assistant police chief. Right? Because you're saying police chief, that one should say an assistant, right?
So, again, it's just whether you want it or not, David, right?
It is.
So, someday you retire, I don't want somebody be strapped when they come in here and they're police chief.
Absolutely not, no, it's just, you know, and it's like we discussed last time, that may be something that, that we go ahead and go through with anyway.
Sure, yes. I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, second by Clayton, motion by Billy, Denny?
Aye.
Gina?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, next up is first reading of an amendment to ordinance 2024-05 to correct names on ordinance.
And then let me just kind of bring y'all up to date on why we're doing these. Dave Vickery got with me and wanted to change some of the verbiage on the last two re... I think it was the last two rezoning ones we had done back, that passed on February 5th. There's minimal changes, but we're going to have to do two readings on both of those next ones to correct that verbiage, so.
Okay.
The one that I laid on top, that we talked about this afternoon, the Watkins one.
An ordinance amending and adopting an amended zoning map entitled Zoning Map, Litchfield, Kentucky, by changing the district classification of the property located in Litchfield, Kentucky, as herein after described from B1 Neighborhood Business and C1 Highway Commercial to EX1 Exclusive Use. Whereas ordinance number 2024-06 was duly adopted by the city, by the Litchfield City Council on February 5th, 2024, it has come to the city's attention that the property description in said ordinance is incorrect, and the ordinance has other inconsistencies with the recommendation of the planning commission. Now therefore be it ordained by the city of Litchfield that ordinance 2024-06 of the city of Litchfield ordinance since passed on February 5th, 2024, be amended as follows, with added portions being underlined and deleted portions being indicated by a line drawn through them and encompassed by brackets and closing them. Whereas the Litchfield Planning Commission of Litchfield, Kentucky, on January 8th, 2024, held a public hearing on application number RZ-23-125, the property is currently owned by Clayton Watkins Construction Company Incorporated, and is designated as a property having a PVA number 083-08-05-003 and 083-08-05-004 and 083-08-05-049, being more particularly described in deed book 517, page 120. Records of the Grayson County Clerk's Office and being located at 306 Marion Street, Litchfield, Kentucky. The request asks for a change from B-1 Neighborhood Business and C1 Highway Commercial to EX1 Exclusive Use. And whereas city council members conducted a review of the record and evidence presented before the Litchfield Planning Commission, and its recommendation is that the zoning map amendment be approved as affects this property. Its recommendation is attached and incorporated herein by reference, and now therefore be it ordained by the city of Litchfield, Kentucky as follows. Boundaries of the district is shown on District Map entitled Zoning Map, Litchfield, Kentucky, being same as hereby amended for reasons adopted, all of which is made a part hereof, as fully set out herein, including the rezoning request from the Planning Commission dated January 9th, 2024, to the Litchfield City Council, so the property is described as follows. Property description, refer to property description added, tract 1-1, consisting of 2.44 acres, and tract 2-2, consisting of 0.83 acres, as set out on the preliminary plat development plan attached to application, PVA number 083-05-003 and 083-08-05-004 and 083-08-05-049. Deed book 517, page 120, records of the Grayson County Clerk's Office and being located at 306 Marion Street, Litchfield, Kentucky, 42754, now zoned to EX1 Exclusive Use after the adoption of this ordinance. This amended ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication as required by law. This ordinance or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are repealed to the extent of such conflict, given a second reading and duly enacted by the legislative body of the city of Litchfield on blank day of blank, 2024, after first being read on the 18th day of March, 2024.
Do we need to read the next one, too, Tyler? You want me to go ahead and start on that, then?
An ordinance amending and adopting an amended zoning map entitled Zoning Map, Litchfield, Kentucky, by changing the district classification of the property located in Litchfield, Kentucky, as herein after described from agricultural to R2 Single Family Medium Density. Whereas ordinance number 2024-05 was duly adopted by the Litchfield City Council on February 5th, 2024, it has come to the city's attention that the ordinance had some typographical errors causing inconsistencies with the recommendation of the planning commission. Now therefore be it ordained by the city of Litchfield that ordinance 2024-05 of the city of Litchfield ordinance since passed on February 5th, 2024, be amended as follows, with added portions being underlined and deleted portions being indicated by a line drawn through them and encompassed by brackets and closing them. Whereas the Litchfield Planning Commission of Litchfield, Kentucky, on January 8th, 2024, held a public hearing on application number RZ-23-124, the property is currently owned by Rebecca Miller, delete Ann Cheryl Miller, add Atal, and is designed, designated as a property having a PVA number 083-09-28-065, being more particularly described in deed book 469, page 332, records of the Grayson County Clerk's Office, and being located approximately 820 feet west of the intersection of Wallace Avenue and Howard Avenue, Litchfield, Kentucky. The request asks for a change from agricultural to R2 Single Family Medium Density, and whereas city council members conducted a review of the record and evidence presented before the Litchfield Planning Commission, and its recommendation is that the zoning map amendment be approved as affects this property. Its recommendation is attached and incorporated herein by reference, and now therefore be it ordained by the city of Litchfield, Kentucky as follows. Boundaries of the district is shown on District Map entitled Zoning Map, Litchfield, Kentucky, being same as hereby amended for reasons adopted, all of which is made a part hereof, as fully set out herein, including the rezoning request from the, from the Planning Commission dated 1/9/2024 to the Litchfield City Council, so the property is described as follows. Property description, refer to property description, PVA number 083-09-28-065, deed book 469, page 332, records of the Grayson County Clerk's Office, and being located approximately 820 feet west of the intersection of Wallace Avenue and Howard Avenue, Litchfield, Kentucky, 42754, now zoned R2 Single Family Medium Density after the adoption of this ordinance.
We will have those at the next meeting for the second reading, so. Okay, right now I need a motion to enter executive session.
I make a motion, we enter executive session.
Motion by Clayton, do I have a second? Second by Tudy, all in favor?
Aye.
61 dot 81 ten one B, possible land acquisition.
Okay.
Entertaining a motion at this time to come back in regular session?
I make a motion, we come back in regular session.
Second by two, you all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Earlene, you want to?
The council discussed some acquisition of some land that adjoins the transfer station for a new entry into the transfer station. It's already been made a part of the budget and so that acquisition hopefully will happen soon.
All right, thank you, Earlene. We'll move on down the agenda to unfinished business. Code enforcement amended ordinance for condemned property. Tyler?
Tyler and I need to set up a meeting to discuss this and the drafting of those text amendment ordinances. We haven't done that, but hopefully we can do that this week with Dalton as well on Thursday.
Kate, here you are, Earlene.
Tyler and I do not have those ready. Hopefully Tyler and I and Dalton can sit down and work on those along with the drafting of those text amendments that's next on the agenda.
Okay. Okay, next item is drafting ordinance relating to text amendments to section 2.11 of the zoning ordinance.
I don't have those drafted at this time. I want to go through them with Tyler before I present them to you.
Okay. All right, next up is discussion for observing Good Friday as a holiday. There was some paperwork sent out recently that I think first Billy had the question of the cost on it. I think Sabrina-
She did.
-did that. So, does anyone have any concerns or questions on that as of tonight? If not, then I will entertain a motion to add that Good Friday as a regular holiday for the city employees. Entertain a motion to that effect.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Terry.
I'll second it.
Second by Clayton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, guys.
Mayor, can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
I think that after looking at Jennifer had sent out and requested what other cities and county governments, what their paid holidays were, and I think that maybe we could gather some more information from cities that are more relative to our size, but just based on what I'm seeing on here and what we can all see on here, I really feel like we need to, in the near future, look into adding some more paid holidays for our employees just to make it more competitive. I mean, they do have similar benefits as far as insurance, retirement and everything, but whenever you're getting down to someplace very close to us having 14 paid holidays and we have eight with one floater-
Yeah. Yeah.
That's, I think that's something we definitely need to look into.
I think you're right, and I appreciate you saying that, Terry. We had to be competitive and I think our goals here and our duties are, you know, the citizens of the city and our employees. And I feel like we can, we can need to do best we can for both entities. So, I think in the future, we can look at that and it's a work in progress, of course, you know, but we will, we will try to look at some more cities comparable size to us and get some info from them and then we'll have it from you guys here. I'll talk with Jennifer tomorrow and see if she can get started on that, so, okay.
Mayor, if I could, I'm just curious, since it's a personnel policy issue, is this something the city council has to do or is this something the mayor has the authority to do on his own?
Our personnel policy says it has to be done by proclamation.
Yeah.
Okay. Which is, proclamation required, city council to vote, motion second, proclamation.
Which is what you all just did.
There's a statement at the front of the personnel policy that states that. I don't think there's anything that mandates it in ordinance wise or statute wise, but-
It's in the policy.
But it's in the policy that says that.
I didn't see anything in the ordinance that's related to it. Or, I don't, maybe the personnel, I didn't see that, I don't have the handbook, so I didn't see.
Yeah, I actually looked at-
Yeah, it's in the first couple pages.
Have the handbook.
I was thinking it was backed by the holiday stuff, but I can highlight that and send out.
I'm pretty sure, I think I found it in a couple of spots, but I think it's up near the first of it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, guys. Need to vote to accept the fiscal year '22, '23 audit that was presented to us at the last meeting.
So, that being said, I'm going to back up a little bit. So, what I'm gathering, about $5,000 on public works and about $3,000 on-
Utilities.
On utilities, so $8,000. Forty-six hundred, forty-six hundred on public work and third, 2,300 on utilities.
Okay, you said public work, so yes, utilities, yes.
Both, both together. Still going to cost taxpayer $8,000.
Yes.
Or 6,700. So, that's what it costs for you to take off at one holiday.
Yep, that is correct. Right, on the city side, besides the police department, out of that 4,600, there's only like $400 for actual city. Now, when you look at the utility side, that's the other, whatever it was.
What do you mean by $400 for actual city?
For the other people that has to work. You've got, I think you've got a garbage crew that may have to come in, right, when we're off on Friday to pick up the dumpsters?
No.
Okay. I just know Sabrina told me when she talked to the department heads that out of those figures, the majority of that was for police department on the 4,600 and only about $400 lied within the other city departments, is what it was. So, like I said, the police department's going to take up the majority of that because they can't run on a skeleton.
So, you're not emptying dumpsters on Friday, you're waiting until when? Are you going to do them on Thursday before Good Friday or are you doing it on your Friday dumpsters?
Yeah, we got to pick up the extra dumpsters. Because a lot of our Friday dumpsters are five day a week dumpsters, so we give them on Thursday anyway. So, if we would miss Friday, then they would be picked up on Monday to help catch up, which Mondays will be picked up. That's our best day to have a holiday because we have no ground guards to have to shift around. And, you know, some of the dumpsters, you know, they can hold off until Monday. Now, if we're stuck, we can't, we do have to pick up on Saturday, which I have a crew. One guy comes in and picks up a few dumpsters on Saturday anyway. So, he might have to get a couple more dumpsters, but other than that, I mean, Friday, I wouldn't have to have anybody, you know, I'd a little bit of let everybody have their day off.
So, the transfer station closed all weekend?
And probably most of that $400 is going to be at your shelter.
Shelter.
Because they have to come in and at least clean, but they do have a part-time employee.
So, you don't have anybody that would work on that Friday?
Most of it is just your 24/7 entities, you know, your water plant, your sewer plant, your police. I think Tim and them can actually take off unless they get-
Unless they get a call.
Unless they get called out, but you do have to have people at the shelter to clean and feed the animals for at least a little while.
That holiday is coming up very quickly upon us. Wesley, can you get something out? Maybe the city can post it tomorrow to start telling citizens-
Put that on our, Lori, on our Facebook page, I guess.
What Friday may look like for public works?
With the amended budget?
No. I think, I think there was enough in the budget to cover that because we had already planned on, we had kind of built in for Juneteenth anyways in case that was mandated. So, we did have that little bit of extra there, so we should be, we should be fine.
So, is Juneteenth done?
No. It hasn't been mandated.
Or is that one we're going to have to take?
No, it hasn't been mandated at this point.
It's never been mandated. It's a federal holiday, but it's not been mandated that all agencies take it off, so. Whether they will someday or not, who knows, but they haven't thus far, so. In that, kind of in that vein, Terry, of letting people know, Lori and I have been and Sabrina have been in some meetings with the people with the app, working on that. We've got what, probably four or five more sessions with them-
Probably.
-between training their body and all that, so we're working on that incrementally every week. And then in a month and a half, probably two months or so, we'll have it fired up and ready to go, so. We've talked about maybe getting some business sized cards with, with the, what do you call the little-
The little QR codes.
The QR code on them to hand out to people as we're at meetings and things like that with public. And I think it's really going to be beneficial to us. The big challenge is going to be getting people to use it. So, we need to be a little creative with how we're going to push it out to people. But I think with a little effort, we can, we can make it work well for us, so.
I think for the most part, once people find out that it exists-
Right.
And the ones who are already using apps for everything, they're going to go straight to it. I can't wait.
And it's-
I'm excited.
It's got a lot, lot of parts to it that, that'll be beneficial for both sides, so. Okay. Any other unfinished business? Billy?
Yes, sir.
Terry?
I don't think so.
Toody?
No, sir.
Clayton?
No, sir.
Gina?
No.
Danny?
No, thanks.
Lori?
We just need to vote on the, to get approval to accept the audit report.
Yes, yes, we were, okay.
That's not on any, the only one that is on is yours because I thought about that after, after I printed it. When I was looking through the notes, I noticed you all didn't make-
Okay.
-motions to approve.
I'm going to take a motion now to, to accept the fiscal year '22, '23 audit.
I make a motion.
Motion by Clayton, have a second.
Second.
Second by Toody, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, Lori, anything unfinished?
Unfinished, that's all I have under unfinished.
Earlene? Wes?
Yeah, I just want to remind everybody that April cleanup month, transfer station will be open each Saturday in April from eight to twelve and then the first Saturday of each month till October. We have our cleanup day, which will be April 6th. And the public works department is going to start about eight o'clock. We've got a few streets that we'll hit in different areas of town, try to pick up some trash and then we'll have a little dinner after that and maybe get a little cleaning up though around here.
Okay.
And everybody's welcome to come.
Okay, good deal. We'd like to see anybody that's watching online. We'd love to have you out to help with April cleanup on April 6th. And we will meet over at the Public Works building and if you do have any questions about it, feel free to contact us at City Hall. Okay, David, do you have any unfinished business?
No, sir.
Tyler?
No, sir.
All right, we're going down to new business. Billy?
No.
Terry?
No.
Toody?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Gina?
No.
Danny?
Maybe next time.
Okay.
None to deny.
All right, Lori?
I guess the only new business I have is, I'm not sure how many of you all know, we had an employee in the office take another job in a field that she had went to school for. So, that left an open position in the office. Marsha Young is actually going to convert over to that spot and we have hired a new employee, so we're hoping, she's got some pre-employment stuff to go through, but hopefully, maybe next week or the next week, we'll be able to get her in here. She's actually been living in Grayson County for about two years and has 15 years experience in government at Grand Junction, Colorado, so I think she's going to be a really good fit for us, so.
Thank you, Lori. Earlene, new business. Wes? David?
No, sir.
Tyler?
No, sir.
Other reminder, there will be a solid waster waste committee meeting on April 1st.
As re-lucky as mayor, he's re-lucky.
Yeah. I wanted to gig Lori though, she don't make many mistakes, so. April 1st at 5:00 p.m. before our next meeting, we'll have that solid waste committee. The next chamber luncheon is April 11th at noon. Please let Lori know, no later than noon on Monday, April 8th, if you plan to attend. If there are no other concerns or questions from the council, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Motion by Clayton. Second?
Second.
Second by Toody, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.